Yes, ma'am.
All right, good evening. Welcome to our town hall meeting. This is our second quarter meeting. We try to do this once a quarter. So feel free to come back anytime you'd like. Going to kind of run through the program. A lot of new faces here this time, so make sure everybody understands how we operate. We're gonna, first part of the meeting, we're gonna talk about what we want to talk about, which is going to be property taxes. So you have to sit through that. We'll ask if you have any questions on those items. And then we're going to open it up to talk about what everybody might want to talk about, whether you be with a group or not. Yeah, if you're going to address the board and all your comments need to be made to the Board of Commissioners. You need to come to the podium, state your name and address, and then you'll be able to make your statement. Now, we do want to hear what you have to say. However, we don't want to hear what you have to say about other people that are in the room or have made other comments. So address your issue with us and we'll be, we're more than happy to entertain that. Our goal is to be able, for everybody to be able to be heard tonight, so please help us to do that. All right, we're going to go to the display. All right, so there's been a lot of comments recently about property taxes. So I did a review of property taxes for the last five years on three subject properties in O'Conne County. As you know, from two thousand, so this goes from two thousand nineteen to twenty twenty-three. And there was huge time of inflation. Depend on which estimates you read, it was anywhere from nineteen to twenty-two percent inflationary increase. For United States. The first property we're looking at is a subdivision off Bishop Barnsford Way. The sample period covers two thousand nineteen to twenty twenty-three. And it's based off actual property tax bills, which is available to any citizen on the Tax Commissioner's website. During this time period, the Tax Appraisal Office fair market value of that property increased thirty-nine percent during that time period. That's the value of the home assigned by the Tax appraisal office. As you can see, the taxes on this particular home increased six dollars during that time, one percent increase. So this particular property owner was paying eight hundred fifty-four dollars in O'Conne County tax for the Board of Commissioners. Governing the Sheriff's Office Courts, Parks and Rec Roads, E nine one one, Conny Fire Rescue. Also support for Health Department D facts in our senior center. And then everything else that goes into support those. Our next property is a subdivision off Barnett Schultz Road. This property was purchased in two thousand nineteen. The purchase price of the property was actually purchased forty-eight thousand dollars over the tax appraisal fair market value. It's also interesting to note this property is not taking advantage of the home state exemption currently available to York County County residents. The tax appraisal, so this one runs from twenty twenty to twenty twenty-three because two thousand nineteen was the purchase year. During that time period, the fair market value appraisal increased twenty-five percent from twenty twenty to twenty twenty-three. As you can see, the property taxes for this particular property decreased by one hundred and one dollars or nine percent. And this is based on the military assigned by the O'Conne County Board of Commissioners. Our third property, our review was located in the subdivision between Daniels Bridge Road and Wellbrook Road. Sample period again runs from two thousand nineteen to twenty twenty-three. During this time, the property, properties appraised value increased thirty-one percent during the sample period. This, this property also highlight, highlights what we're going to talk about next, which is our, what we're trying to do on our ballot questions, ten ballot questions that are coming up. So the property tax levy for the, by the Board of Commissioners dropped the the tax rate or the now, the dollar amount of tax by one hundred and eighty-eight dollars or fifteen percent. It also appears that the homeowner filed for the sixty-five plus property assessment freeze in twenty twenty-three. And that homeowner could have claimed this exemption four years earlier, thus making the sample period reduction in taxes even larger. So when we set our military rate and we talk about rollbacks and reducing the military rate, this is the, the net result on true property in O'Conne County. Now we're going to talk about on your ballot when you go to the polls to vote. Starting April twenty ninth will be the first day of early voting. And then March twenty, or May twenty-first is the actual election date. There'll be ten ballot questions on your ballot related to home state exemption changes that we want to make. We started doing this because we were approached by citizens that asked us to look at our senior exemptions in O'Conne County. So there was meetings held with Marcus Weidauer, Houston Gaines, and our Tax Commissioner. We reviewed our exemption, existing exemptions, talked about some of the issues with them. What we found out was that part of the problem with our current exemptions are you have to know about the exemption. And then you have to come in and you have to apply for that exemption. Some of the exemptions to be, to stay accurate and legal must be, should be audited. And there's just not the staff in the Tax Commissioner's office to do audits on a regular basis. During that meeting, we also talked about alternatives that we could, how we could change our senior exemptions. And brainstormed on those. We investigated those and then met with the Board of Education on the recommended changes that we're fixing to go over. To discuss with them, the impact on, on them. So the stuff we're talking about applies to not only Board of Commissioner levy tax, but also the Board of Education. What we're wanting to do right now is the minimum home state exemption required by the state is two thousand dollars. And we're on, we're wanting to add three thousand dollars to that to make it a five thousand dollar home state exemption. That is for every home state of property in O'Conne County. Then if all ten ballot questions are approved, that five thousand will be increased by another five thousand for a total of ten thousand dollars on every home state of property in O'Conne County. These ballot questions also end our current income based ones. So if you have an income based exemption, you'll be able to continue that exemption for the full amount until you're no longer qualified. What we now have the ability to do is also put the property tax assessment freezes in automatically at age sixty-five. So the first January first that you are sixty-five, you will automatically have your assessments frozen. In addition, on the first January first that you turn seventy-five, you'll get another ten thousand dollar home state exemption on top of these other exemptions that we've already talked about. So unfortunately, to do that, it took ten acts of the legislature to make this happen. So basically, four of those acts are repealing what's in place now. And then the remaining six are putting the new exemptions into action. You have to have one for the Board of Education and one for the Board of Commissioners in order to accomplish. So House Bill seven sixty-three be one of the questions on your ballot. And this is what takes all homeowners seventy-five and older will receive an additional ten thousand dollar exemption for county government taxes. So right now, if you're seventy-five and older, you get a two thousand dollar home state exemption. If all ten acts passed, you will receive a five thousand dollar general home state plus another five, uh, ten thousand for a total of fifteen thousand. So from two thousand to fifteen thousand dollar increase at age seventy-five. Next one is House Bill seven sixty-four, all homeowners sixty-five and older will automatically have their property values frozen for the current year for the county tax, county government tax. So if you're currently in a assessment freeze, your base year will remain the same as you move over to this new exemption. So if you filed your exemption in two thousand nineteen, that's your base year, that will transfer over. So you're not losing anything with the passage of this, these acts. House Bill seven sixty-five, this is repealing one of our income based exemptions. There was an income range where you could get additional fifteen thousand dollar home state versus a complete removal of your taxes. What we found is that the freezes actually provide more property tax relief than this fifteen thousand dollar home state. So your fifteen thousand dollar home state will go away and your base year remains the same. So your freeze will, you'll go to a freeze of your property assessment on your base year. House Bill seven sixty-six. Now, this is for school taxes. It changes the home state exemption from two to five and automatically goes to ten and twenty thirty-five for the school portion. House Bill seven sixty-seven is your property assessment freeze for school taxes. Seven sixty-eight. So this is for homeowners, there's, there's a home state exemption now for a very low income rate that you can exempt your school and county taxes. We're going to allow that to continue until that, that homeowner is no longer qualified. But there'll be no new applications for that one after January first of twenty twenty-five. House Bill seven sixty-nine. Again, the exemption from two thousand to five thousand and automatic to ten thousand in twenty thirty-five. Seventy-five and older going to ten thousand additional exemption for school taxes. And then the repeal of the fifteen thousand dollar home state based on income. Again, your base years will remain the same. So the purpose of this was to offer more relief for our property, for our homeowners. Also to help our seniors sixty-five and older, and then again, when you turn seventy-five and older. It's designed so nobody gets hurt. So you're actually, you'll move to an exemption that's better for you now than you're in. Or if you're in one that's better for you, you will be able to continue that till you're no longer qualified to do that. In the last legislative session, there was a bill passed for a constitutional amendment to increase the state minimum home state exemption from two thousand to four thousand. So you'll have really eleven chances to vote to reduce your property taxes for a home standard. So if that happens, then the base will be four thousand from the, that the state requires. We're still going to give you our three thousand from the if all ten ballot questions pass, or a total of seven thousand dollar home state exemption. And then if, with all of them passing, if you're seventy-five and older, you'll have a seventeen thousand dollar home state exemption on that property. Do we have any questions on the home states? Yes, sir. If you would, remember, come to the microphone. Let us know who you are.
I'm George Rodriguez, one oh five Height Drive in Watkinsville. Couple of questions. One is, how do you vote? Do you vote yes for all of these? I mean, that's where the confusion is.
Right, yes.
Okay. I don't even get into why there's ten that you have to get, get right. So, okay. The other thing is, as you talk about the reduction in property tax based on millage. What I'd suggest is that looking at the algorithm that you use to assess property might be a problem. You talk about inflation. Personally, I think that's part of the problem. Is that somebody wrote a computer program to tell you how much our house is worth. And that program doesn't allow for individual markets. So.
Oh, I would, I would disagree with that. There's a whole separate Board of Assessors. And it's much more than just pushing F three and getting a new value on your.
Well, my, my point being is that by changing the, the millage rate, you're affecting the actual amount. But the algorithm is still telling you what the house is worth or what the property is worth. So if that's going to keep going up, you're going to have to keep lowering the millage rate. And it would be simpler to stay steady with the, the algorithm rather than having to adjust the, the millage rate every time.
So there was, there was a lot of discussion in the State House this year on a bill that would do something similar to that. And it was kind of interesting to see the arguments on both sides. Didn't end up passing, but that has been broached.
But you understand what I'm, what I'm asking about. So thank you. Y'all have been doing a nice job. Thank you.
Yes, sir. Come on up.
I'm Stephen Ellsner, O'Conne County. I'm kind of want to draft off what that fellow was just talking about. The way it, it's like you have two parameters, X and Y. And in this case, you have an assessed value and you have the millage rate. And it's like neither is well controlled under these circumstances, it seems to me. And it doesn't index for inflation or deflation. If we have a deagle effect, and I'm sure somewhere somebody in conspiracy theory land has heard of death's die-offs. Things go down in value because there's no buyers. And at that point, it's like, okay, you have a fixed floor. Good luck. But the taxes are still going to be insured. And I understand the county has a reason that they need to ensure that the taxes are maintained. Okay, unrelated to that, that complaint. Which is, why is this being brought up on a primary election and not in the general? Is this like two bites at the apple?
No, this is, this is one shot for.
Because this could be like T-spots where we had like, oh, didn't work, bing, next time we'll do it again. Thank you.
That, that maybe, maybe somebody comes back and tries to do it again. Maybe they don't. I will strongly disagree that the village rate is not controlled in O'Conne County. We just gave you examples of showing exactly how that works. When the miller's rate is dropped, that it does affect, it reduces, it counteracts the inflationary thing that you're talking about. Yes, ma'am.
Hi, my name's Rachel Hallfield. I live at eleven ten Jeremy Drive. It sounds like a lot of this is to reduce taxes that the homeowners are paying in O'Conne County. And if we're reducing the taxes that the homeowners are paying, isn't that also reducing the taxes that are going to the county schools for their budgets? And if so, what income are we going to use to replace that budget money? What are the schools going to be taking from in order to maintain their budgets and not having to cut their programs?
Yep. Specifically, schools, they get a lot of funding from their state. Over half their budget comes from the state of Georgia. Also, we have to understand, we do have natural growth in our digest every year. So real growth, a new, a new home, a new business comes in. So that's increasing annually as well. So that's where your growth comes, as well as sales tax on our end, as sales tax numbers continue to, to increase. That covers it as well. Want it?
Six Anna Highland, O'Conne County. Wanted to piggyback on your question because I actually had that same question. I was curious about, I know we spoke at the Democrat meeting when you brought this up and I asked you what the plan was for recouping this lost revenue and you said sales tax. And so I, I feel like I need more information on that. I followed the open records. I also emailed you asking anticipated sales, you know, revenue for the, for the next five years, ten years, twenty years. You couldn't tell me. They, they didn't provide anything in open records. They said that they didn't have anything, any of those numbers. I also went on to ask how many people, let's see, specifically anticipated loss in revenue for the next ten years due to this proposed legislation. Total number of households which qualify for the proposed exemption starting in twenty twenty-five broken down going through twenty forty-five. Total number of taxpayers, total number of properties owners who are at least sixty-five. And, you know, make that, that forty thousand dollars a year and the total number who are seventy-five years old, as well as those who did not fifteen, who did not make more than fifteen thousand dollars a year. The response that I got from the county was that you don't have any of those, no document responsive. So my question is, it seems like this legislation is based on, I don't know what. I don't have any numbers. You're not providing any numbers. All you're saying is, you know, sales tax increases. I mean, it's not just the county that's taking from sales tax and the Board of Education is taking from sales tax too. So what kind of a pot are we looking at? I, I mean, are we, you know, I don't know what it is. You've not answered her. You didn't answer me in the email that I sent or the open records. That would be kind of curious. I would hope that we have done some research as to anticipated revenue that we're going to use to make up this loss in sales, I mean, this loss in property tax. That would be my first thing. My second thing is, like he said, why is this on a May primary ballot and not on a general election in November? This is a presidential election. Lots of people are going to vote in it. Not so many people vote in the primary election. So why are we, and I, I know I asked you that and you said because it takes time to implement that. And I do understand that. But my fear is, if we're a population of forty, I mean, if we're a county of forty-one thousand or forty-two thousand people and we have very low percentage turnout at the primaries. And I, I don't know how many that is, but say it's, it's even half, which I'm not sure it'll be that. Then half of the people in our county are going to make this decision for the rest of us. Whereas in November, if it had been on the ballot for them, we're going to have a much higher percentage of voters who are going to vote for the president in this, in this November election. So once again, why are we putting it on this, on this ballot except for it takes time to implement it? Other than that, I, I don't know. Doesn't make sense to me. So I'd love an answer on that, if you have one, anything different than what you told him.
Well, I'd say you, you might want to check your turnout for elections in O'Conne County. Well.
So are you saying that you have?
No, I'm saying you might want to look at turnout for the primaries in O'Conne County. That may change some of your.
So you're thinking it's close to the general election or am I just missing that or?
No, you have to go look. So the, what I would, would tell you is that we chose Mar, the, the May primary because typically we do have good turnout. And there is a lot to implement in these changes. You're not only affecting the Tax Commissioner, you're affecting, affecting the Tax Assessor's Office as well. And all these little codes have got to be changed. All these birth dates have got to be checked and make sure that the automatic exemption flows in so that nobody gets cheated. So is this taking the tax burden off? Yes, it's lifting the tax burden off the seniors. If you don't think they don't need a, they need a tax break, then you're welcome to vote no for it. You don't think property owners.
Everybody feels that way, honestly. I do.
Well, that's what you're, you're saying. So.
That's what I'm concerned about is that we have no idea, according to your office, A, how much revenue we're losing.
What's your, what's your open records request asked for was sales tax projections to twenty forty-five? We don't do sales tax, twenty forty-five.
Give me anything, even for the next five years. I mean, we've not planned how much revenue, how much money we're losing and how much we're anticipating.
Who says we're losing anything?
I don't know. You could have told me that in my open records. That's all.
Also told you that the, the, all the financial statements are out there. You want to go out there and look at the, and try to extrapolate to twenty forty-five, go ahead.
But didn't you all do that before you planned this?
I did not, I told you I didn't extrapolate to twenty forty-five for sales tax. No, ma'am. I did not do that.
And I actually just said for the first five years and you didn't answer that either. So I, I'm just concerned that we're, we're giving up revenue and we don't, we're not sure how much we're getting back. That's all.
Thank you for sharing that. Yeah.
Thank you.
I don't think the school system, no one, school system as I know it would even agree to any of this if they didn't think it was a work of. Period.
And that's, that's fun, but it.
I'm not, I'm not, I'm not going to sit here and, and speak for the school system. I did that years ago, but I don't think they would have agreed. And I'll also tell you, when the banking crisis happened and the evaluations dropped, the state stepped in and said to, to the appraisers, they had to evaluate at, at the selling price as it dropped. And that might happen again.
So that's actually a, a even larger reduction in.
But we still, we were still, let me tell you, the village rate was eight point four eight when I first came on. It's four point something now. Our budget's larger. Because of the things that he's talking about, any house that goes on the market currently is sold pretty quick. Because of the things that he's talking about, that you, any house that goes on the market currently is sold pretty quick and they're bidding on it. And that's because of the school system.
I know. I'm, I'm talking about lost revenue. I'm not talking about values, but you're right. Yes.
That's where the money comes. We are still taking in a lot of money because of evaluations. But to keep, to just to sit on it and say, yeah, we're gonna keep taking that guy's money. Cause we want, we want big accounts. I think that's wrong.
I think you're miss, I think you're misinterpreting. That's not what I'm saying. I'm just, I'm clearly, I'm just simply.
You want some numbers that we, if you're looking for numbers way out in the, in the future.
I just, I just said five years.
Let me, let me say this to you. It took 14 years to get Costco here. 14 years.
Right. And we can bring that up in another meeting. I know. We can talk, we can talk about that in another meeting and the bonds that were issued on that. I do, and I understand that. I'm just asking.
I'd be glad to talk to you about it.
I, I just, I'm concerned that we do not have any idea what the, the lost revenue is and the projected income on sales tax. And to say that it's growing, we don't know that. Just because it's growing right now, look around in the economy, we all, we are all, all of us are suffering. I mean, maybe, you know, to different degrees, but I just think and, and then the push on the May ballot, you know, makes me concerned. That's all. I'm just asking for numbers and I'm not getting.
Let me say something about the May ballot. All of us at one time or another were selected at the May ballot because all the office holders are Republican.
Okay, okay.
There was no need, I mean, you could have somebody on in November. That's fine. But generally, every elected office in this county is selected in the, on the Republican ballot in primary.
This is a presidential election year. That's all that I'm saying. I.
I understand that. We, we just gonna have some disagreements.
Yes, we are. And once again, I don't have any numbers, but thank you. I appreciate it.
Mr. Chairman, can I make a couple of comments? You, just general comment. I'm not directing them to the, to the lady that spoke. But one of the things that's not being mentioned is about this lost revenue, is this board of commissioners have an opportunity to live within its budget, within its means. And the process we go through, the staff goes through a projection of what we're anticipating to have in the way of revenue. And so that's taken all into account when we start to, the budget process has already started. It started earlier this year. So, you know, if the revenue is not there, these, this board right here has the propensity to keep the millage rate down. And it doesn't have willy nilly, just go ahead and spend money if it's not there. So the question about lost revenue, yes, it is made up by the, uh, growth in the digest. We're talking about homeowners here, uh, with homestead exemption. And we're also talking about the fact that the sales tax that we've, uh, are enjoying at the moment, sure, it can turn on a dime with the economy. Uh, but the other thing is that we manage the budget. So if we don't have the money anticipated to come in, we won't spend it. We're not into, uh, deficit spending like the folks in, in Washington do. We don't print money here. So all I want to say is that the conversations talks about the lost revenue. Don't forget that we do have a control over the budget. And Mr. Chairman, if I'm not mistaken, uh, we have reduced the millage rate for the last three years. I'll, I'll give credit to everybody. I know I've, I've participated in those votes. And it's our intentions to keep our millage rate as low as possible. Now I'm talking about on the county side. I can't speak for the school board. Uh, cause they have a whole different level of responsibility. Their job is to educate our children. Our job is everything else. So we're pretty, they're pretty focused on the kids and we have to deal with all the things that deal with our daily lives. And so I just want to make sure, Mr. Chairman, that, that I want on record that this board does have control uh, over the budget. And if the revenue is not there, we certainly would take that in consideration. But the seniors, I, I wish we could do more for the seniors. When I, when I campaigned, that's all I heard about. What you gonna do for seniors? We don't want to pay school taxes anymore. Well, I, I kept reminding them I was not running for the school board, thank God. Uh, but I told them I would do everything I could to help minimize or at least give some relief. Now I was disappointed, I mean, that we didn't do more for our seniors. But I'm glad that we're able to do what we're able to do. So, uh, if, if this doesn't pass, uh, Mr. Chairman, don't expect me to whip it back out there again, because I just said the people, people have spoken. They don't want to reduce their property taxes. We hear you. So that's it. So don't, don't go looking for me to whip that thing back out there the next election. So I'm, I'll be done with it. But I have done what I promised I would do. It's that to help our senior citizens. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Come on up. Nice. Come on up. We got people watching online, so they can't hear you from the back.
Oh, my name's Rachel. Um, you mentioned the school board. Did the school board have input or have to, uh, approve this?
Yeah, we met with the school board.
Okay. Thank you.
Do you have the questions on the homestead or property tenant? Now it's yours. If you have a question, come on up. I can't, I don't know exactly what you're asking there.
I was hoping you were gonna go through the options and explain everything.
We did. You must've got in a little late. Yes, ma'am. I'll be, be glad to talk afterwards. Yes, ma'am. Yes, sir. Now it's your turn. There's no order in which to come up. If the mic's open, you're welcome to come up. Just remember what we talked about at the beginning of the meeting. State your name and address and. Nope, this is, this, the floor is open.
Open mic.
I'm a little nervous about this. Hi. My name's Susannah Drennan. I live on South Main Street. In fact, my house is gonna be on the historic ramble on Sunday. If anyone would like to come and give me some pushback about what I'm about to say, I will be there. Uh, thank you for allowing me to stand up here today. And I don't, I wrote this long thing and hopefully some of it's gonna be kind of funny. Maybe not. Uh, I don't know how much I'll actually get through, but bear with me. And if you need to kind of do the cutting off signal, let me know. Uh, I am a mom to two 13-year-old twins. And I want to discuss some library issues and I can't quite believe that I am still hearing about this and feeling the need to discuss it. And I, as I was thinking about what I wanted to say this evening, I kept going down these rabbit holes. This is my commute, getting my kids to school. And I was like, I want to talk about this and I want to talk about this and I want to talk about that, but I should be concise. And I think I may have failed on the concise part and uh, we'll see, we'll see. It's a little long-winded. But when I think about it, it seems that the attacks on the library, the librarians and some of the reading materials could possibly be a means to an end. It seems to me that by constantly protesting, nitpicking, complaining, cajoling and haranguing y'all, this and, and other bodies apart from Justice Commission, there's a minority that thinks they are attacking the weakest part of a defensive wall. Because if you start with attacking free speech, for example, right off the bat, you might expect some justifiable backlash. But if you attack libraries and a few select books and couch those attacks as defensible on account of those books being inappropriate to children, then you are plucking at emotional threads that could stir up sympathy. And some of the people who respond emotionally have probably never even read those books. And if you can get those books re-shelved or removed, then you can move on to the next issue. Parent advisory committees as a way to ban books that don't sit well with your worldview, for example. And as a point of curiosity, I actually would love to see both here and behind me, a show of hands. How many people have actually read two of these hotly contested books, one of which is Flamer? Who's read it cover to cover? Anyone? One. So minority, right? There's a minority of people in this room that have read that cover to cover. I thought that was an important book because, and the thing that I found the most objectionable in that book was the display of over aggressive, bullying, narrow-minded behavior displayed by some of the secondary characters in that book. What about Nick and Charlie? One? Feel a minority. Again, I thought that was a sweet story. That was a sweet love story about two young adults. And it used to be in the young adult section. And the only reason I think that that was moved to the adult section is because it was between two boys and not between a boy and a girl, in my opinion. So the rabbit holes that I went down, I'm just gonna take you on a slight, a small, short, maybe not short tour. Rabbit hole number one. Where is the freedom or justice in denying people of any age materials that reflect and give knowledge and information regarding their personal life experiences? Rabbit hole number two. How is it fair to deny our children and adolescents who are weathering the turbulence of growing up access to materials that might help them understand who they are and what they are going through? For a small group to determine that those materials, because they do not conform to their worldview, is not liberty, but censorship. Rabbit hole number three. Pulling or reclassifying items that have been deemed appropriate by the trained professionals, our librarians, who are all required to have a master's degree in library science. Because a small group of parents is bullying them into doing so, means that my kid's freedom is being restricted. The simple solution to this is that if you don't want your children to access certain materials, then you should have a discussion with them about what is appropriate and what is not. Anyone under 10 is technically not allowed in the library without direct supervision. And so this should be easy to do. Adolescents can visit the library on their own. And despite the fact that I have a good, open, communicative relationship with my kids, I am under no illusions that there are going to be some topics they might not want to discuss with mom. And I, would I rather they go to the library to peruse titles that have been professionally vetted? Or would I rather they go to YouTube where there are most certainly no librarians vetting that information? Rabbit hole number four. I have a problem. And I must say it, this is a four-letter word for some people, but it's actually a three-letter word. Books about consent, sex and sex education. What do people think that actually means? Do they think sex education is teaching small children about sexual positions? Obviously, to some people it does, because there is a letter in the newspaper this week. The issue, I'm gonna skip the first paragraph. The issue with the books is age appropriateness, which is true. The LGBTQ community has an agenda. Hmm, not so true. The agenda is to expose as many children as possible, as young as possible, to the LGBTQ lifestyle. If they had their way, children could sit at a library table with their sippy cups and animal crackers to read books. Imagine Blippi, I don't know who Blippi is, and Ms. Rachel demonstrating their favorite position to do on a skid steer. On second thought, that would never happen. That doesn't fulfill their agenda. It would have to be Blippi and Handyman Hal describing the best maneuvers on a backhoe. I mean, please. Sex education is important, but instead of educating our young people on what the holy crap is happening to their bodies, their urges and how to ask for and give consent. And I think this is where some of these books have ruffled feathers is the consent. People would rather sweep that right under the rug. Not being transparent with this information only, in my opinion, leads to trauma. And there is a very large difference between teaching young people about what they might be experiencing and dropping a penthouse forum in front of them. I grew up in the eighties. I remember those. In fact, most young people now learn about sex from watching porn online. This is terrible. Materials curated by the library are not pornographic. I'm quite offended that that's even thought of in the same brain space with some people. As an aside, I would also like to clarify something to those who don't know what a graphic novel is. Graphic novel is more closely related to the term graphic design, not porno graphic novel. In other words, these are books that tell their stories primarily through using pictures. Right? A sort of comic book, if you like, but without the many onomatopoeias present in superhero comics. And if you don't know that word, you can ask a librarian. Rabbit hole number five. Fringe groups have no place in deciding what reading materials should go into a public library. If those fringe groups would like to have their own libraries, they may do so. But the public library by definition is for the public. And despite some people wanting this county to remain only white, Christian, conservative and straight, there are people from children through adults here in this very county who are gay, trans, bi, black, brown, Muslim and atheist, among other things. And our library should have something for every single one of them. And finally, the last burrow I found myself going down was a public relations one. It was bad PR for the current president of the ALA to declare herself a Marxist lesbian. Almost as bad as it was for the co-founder of Moms for Liberty to have a threesome. And if you are a straight couple, there's no way to have a threesome without at least a part of it being gay. Which has now led to a charge of rape being brought against her husband. Just because there's a PR blunder does not mean that you have to throw the proverbial baby out with the bathwater. So after bouncing back and forth between all these topics, I have come back to rest on the simple fact that we have a wonderful library system staffed with highly trained professionals. Certainly more qualified than anyone in this room. I am grateful that it is a part of the larger regional system and that it can get support from the ALA when needed. I am also grateful that the libraries are autonomous and separate from the ALA and can decide what materials they want in their libraries without the organization dictating to them what they should provide to readers. As an end user, I have absolutely no interest in ceding control of this glorious public space to any group that would seek to paint it in their own narrow-minded image. And I truly hope that you all on this board and the community at large continue to hold fast and speak out in support of our wonderful library. And I think you have, and I thank you for that. We need you as the protective force to keep these would-be Visigoths from breaching the defenses of a free and open society where professionally vetted information is available to all who are curious enough to seek it out. Thank you.
Howdy. My name's Kurt Dahlstrom.
You would, you need to speak into the mic. Again, we have people watching online. So if you pull that back.
Try and pull it down a little bit. A little loud for microphones sometimes. My name is Kurt Dahlstrom. For those I haven't met yet, I live, uh, in the Oconee side of Jennings Mill on Miller's Lake. Uh, with my family, I'm raising two kids. We make very heavy use of the library. I'm a professor of microbiology where I work to genetically engineer bacteria to promote food crop growth in our warmer and drier soils in the U.S. right now. My views are my own and not those of my employer. I have three quick points to make about the library. First, I don't understand the scenario where young children are seeing any library books without their parents' involvement. The library is not located in a walkable part of town, so presumably the parents who drove their seven, eight or nine-year-olds to the library and should be attending to them. If the concern is the child might notice a book containing LGBT, LGBT themes or similar, and the parent is worried they're gonna have to explain that gay people exist, well, yep, that's your job. If we are talking about a 16-year-old with a driver's license, parents already don't have control over what that person reads. That's a fantasy worthy of its own novel. So to me, potentially turning over book classification decisions to a citizen board is a solution in search of a problem. Second, I looked at a couple of the books reclassified by the library over the past year. And while I appreciate the debate in some cases, I'm a bit perplexed by some of the themes that are being targeted. Some of these books have dealt with bullying and sending kids the message that if a girl wants to play with a truck or a boy likes the color yellow, only a very small person would try to make the child feel bad about that. I don't know why that message isn't appropriate. I feel other books which acknowledge the existence of sex have also been reclassified almost exclusively to the adult section. The problem here globally is that in many. The problem here globally is that in many cases, we are moving books away from relevant audiences. Many seem to think that if we simply limit what kids can see, then we won't have to deal with issues of bullying or that no one will turn out gay or that there will be safer, uh, these kids will be safer from exploitation if they remain ignorant about sex. But research collected by the Guttmacher Institute and the CDC show basically the opposite. The teens who actively engage with concepts of consent, the human body, and human sexuality are better informed, less likely to be abused, uh, less likely to contract an STD or become pregnant. And works of literature, I think, play a really key role in this process. I don't know how many of you saw the front page of the Oconee Enterprise this past week. That was tough reading. I ask as bluntly as I can, why wouldn't we want our kids to be actively engaging with the knowledge of some of these concepts so they are prepared to keep themselves safe instead of being left ignorant? While I do believe in providing information in an age-appropriate manner, I think there is a major overcorrection going on that is harming our children rather than protecting them. With regard to these studies, I'll say to the board what I tell my PhD students when they're doing molecular biology in the lab. The data is the data, and you must deal with it as rendered. You can't change it. Third, I want to point something out to the commissioners. I think that if you couched the choice to let a parent-led group make decisions about objectionable library content as a way to protect children from the most sexually explicit works out there, you would win a First Amendment challenge in a federal courtroom. Unfortunately. I noticed one of the commissioners made a comment at a previous meeting that the library, we have to figure out how to make it better reflect our values in Oconee County. That's the one thing you can say that will sink you in a First Amendment case. Talking about values as the reason for reclassification of books elevates the kind of complaint that can be made. Because the First Amendment standard is that we cannot discriminate based upon viewpoint. Therefore, any discussion of values would hurt the would-be defendants. And I remind the commissioners, federal courts have historically had much stricter standards for public libraries than public schools. So I ask you to do a thought experiment with me. What would happen if you put a parent-led group in charge of reclassifying any books they wanted? Perhaps some of, uh, the speakers you've heard previously would be on that committee. Do you trust that group to be judicious enough to keep Oconee County out of a federal lawsuit? Because if the committee developed a pattern of reclassifying just about every LGBT book, but no works that condemn LGBT people such as religious texts, the county becomes very vulnerable at that point. Further, many of the people that might serve on such a committee have already been quoted in the newspaper saying much more explicitly that this is about values, which nearly guarantees a loss at the federal trial court level. I don't have the experience to give you the outcome for every possible mutation that might arise as this unfolds. So my advice here is that the board needs advice from an attorney who has explicit experience litigating in federal court. Because that's the kind of legal advice you will need. Wasting taxpayer money on a losing issue is one of several reasons I hate culture war matters. Ignoring evidence-based data is another. The final reason that I really dislike culture war stuff is what it can do to a community like my hometown. Some of you know, I grew up in rural North Dakota. The town was gripped by culture war issues in the early 2000s, specifically whether or not gay people should be allowed to marry. Because of exclusionary policies put into place, the folks who had the ability to invest in our community stopped doing so, and their kids moved away. At that point, any of us remaining that had the ability to leave did so before the town died. And it did. The town was not big enough to be split in two and survive. Watkinsville is not much bigger. So I ask the commissioners and everyone else to adopt a mentality of live and let live and to mind one's own garden and let others worry about theirs. My wife and I have enjoyed this place, and we have proudly invested in local businesses. But I can't stop thinking about the use that must feel very targeted as adults indirectly discuss their worth. If it's gonna be a problem, uh, our next investments will be funding inclusionary programs at the library ourselves. My wife and I have enjoyed it here. Uh, we've proudly invested in local businesses, and that's something we can do. I want to make it clear that no matter who is elected to this commission going forward, the county government lacks the power to ban a group of people who want to meet at the library based upon their viewpoint, and I'm happy to foot the bill for that meeting. As I found out, uh, that the library spends virtually no money actually on these groups, it seems that a lot could be done with private money to elevate them. Think about if that's something you'd like to happen, I'm all ears.
Think he might be giving us credit for more power than we have.
It happens.
I mean, yeah, well, you know, when this, let me just say this, when when this first came up, we, let me, let me go back a little bit. We make a donation to the library. We don't run the library system, never have, to my knowledge. We don't judge the books. We leave that to the system they have. We've never tried to impose our will, personal feelings about particular books, because I, I went through, I was on the school board when we went through the book banning back in the early nineties. I'm probably the only one except his wife, who was a superintendent, Amory Harden's wife was superintendent. So I understand a lot of the things you're saying, but I'm telling you, we, we, it came to us. I think because, to be quite honest with you, maybe because we make a donation, I would call it that, or a contribution to the library system to keep it going. Have been for years. But we don't get in the weeds at the library. We don't go buy the books. We don't judge the books. I've got grandchildren, I've got two that have my grandchildren. And I try to be a good parent and try to judge as a parent what I think they should be able to look at. But we by no means get in the grass at the library. I think some people think that we do because it's got Oak Oconee County Library. It automatically comes under the county commission, but that's not true. The employees don't work for us. So you may be, you know, you and some other folks, and I'm being just as straight with you as I can. I, I think we're given, we're given power that we don't have and don't want it. I for one do not want the government as elected bodies to go pick out the books. We don't do that, don't want to. I think it'd be a horrible mistake.
Indeed, so if I'm understanding you correctly, there are no plans on the table to create a citizen-led board to determine which books are reclassified.
I'm not proposing anything like that. That was said at the same place that you're standing. But I'm certainly not proposing that. I'm not proposing to take the money away from the library. Never have.
We have an accord?
What?
Commissioners, we, we agree with this statement?
Well, they don't want, they can, they have their own opinion, but, but I'm, but I'm telling you that I have no opinion, no desire to take the money away from the public library. I think this, this, the county commission has always been pretty supportive of the library. So.
I'm so glad to hear it.
Well, I think, I think if you'd been coming, I don't know how many times you've come, but I certainly have said what, what I think to be the case for me. And I would hope that we can get over some of this stuff. To be quite honest with you, I think the system works. I have no problem with anybody in this room challenging a book. If they feel they need to do that for their family or whatever. But I will tell you, everybody's not gonna agree. That's the protection of the library system. That you, just because I may not like a book, that doesn't give me the right to arbitrarily go take the book out of a library. Probably a lot of countries you could find that do that, but I have no desire to do that. I don't think this board has ever felt that way. Be, be quite honest with you, we were doing fine before the topic came to us. If that makes you feel, I was doing pretty good until the, it seemed like the, the sky was falling. But the, the point is, go challenge the book or be a parent and say, no, junior, you're not looking at it. But I have never seen a book, to be quite honest with you, and I come from twenty-eight and a half years in law enforcement, that ever caused somebody to go do a crime. Cause a lot of them I dealt with couldn't read. So, you know, I've said, we've been dealing with this for weeks and weeks and weeks. But I don't see anything from me, and I'm certainly not gonna propose it. I would vote against taking any money from the library. I have no desire to see us go create a new library. We don't even have a place to put it. They wanted to go to Wire Park. It would have been here, but, so I think, again, I think people are giving us way too much power that we don't have.
No problem, I'd be happy not to come back again.
We got a lot of other topics too we can go. I'm not trying to say that folks can't say their piece, but, I mean, we're beating this like a dead horse.
My name's Wanda Stitgottis, and we live in the Canyon Creek subdivision. For thirty-three years, I just have three things to say. One, at, who is at a data point and age point in your tax proposal, I'm grateful for that. I appreciate any tax relief we can get. The second thing is, I think that our library staff should be applauded for the work that they do in, not only in maintaining the library services that they provide, but also in making the transition, what was a very difficult transition from the old library to the new library in Wire Park. And finally, um, I have the privilege of serving as the Chair of the Board of Directors for the Oconee Area Resource Council. And I'm always grateful to the support that you provide for us. And I am hoping to see each and every one of you next Thursday afternoon at three thirty when we have the ribbon cutting and open house, so you can see our great new space. Thank you.
My name is Victoria Cruz. I live at eleven fifty-one Lake Welbrook Drive in Athens, Oconee County. And I am happy to get us off this subject. Very happy. Uh, what you've just witnessed is the division that exists in society today. And, uh, if you weren't aware that it was a division, now you are. All right, so, um, I wanna talk about more mundane things like the budget and the comprehensive plan. I have had occasion to look over that recently. Um, because I am remiss in not having done it. I did show up at one of the hearings and looked at the, the maps and everything. I was one of less than fifteen hundred people who weighed in on that comprehensive plan. And I understand that you made a lot of efforts to get citizens, citizen input and that it's a difficult thing to do. But I don't consider less than fifteen hundred people to be a mandate. So I, you know, I, I will have to research ways that it could be done better to make sure that more people have a say in what's going on, more people know what's going on with the comprehensive plan. So that is one thing to look at in the future. The other thing I wanna take issue with is the population estimates that the comprehensive plan is based on. It, it's using historical data, which is all you can do. And you try to make projections on what the population increase is going to be. And everybody is absolutely convinced that there will be a population increase here. However, I think that the estimates are not taking into account certain recent developments, which are a dramatic decrease in fertility rates across the country. Uh, Georgia now ranks, I believe, twenty-seventh in, uh, infertility rates in, in the, in our country. And it's been sinking down into lower levels. So, uh, it's right at the margin between a decision point, like a, a rate, a, a decrease of a certain percentage before it drops into the lowest level of, uh, fertility rate. So we're close. People are not having children. They're not getting married and having children. Or the children are not living, the fertility rate is down. Maybe the previous discussions we had are part of that, and that's something we should consider. Why are fertility rates going down? There may be excess, external factors as well. Um, and, and there are a lot of theories about what those might be, but it's happening all over. Male testosterone is down, male sperm counts are down, and the pregnancy rate is down. And then there are also excess deaths happening. There is an increase, it's, it's, it's going up. There was, uh, you could probably call two thousand nineteen a baseline of excess deaths. And before that, uh, the various organizations who monitor that saw that it was basically a flat line. And then, of course, we were hit with the pandemic and the, the death rates, well, the deaths went up. But even after the pandemic went away, excess deaths remain high. Uh, right now, they're hovering probably in our country between nine and eleven percent of excess deaths. And what excess deaths are, those are deaths of natural causes where, um, before it wasn't a problem, I mean, there's a, there's a standard level, a static level. When it's excess, that, that means more people are dying at all age groups now than they were before of natural causes. And the people who, who looked at this were insurance agents, as you can imagine. Health insurance, life insurance, because there were more people, you know, wanting their claims paid. So that's the only reason this information is getting out, because the insurance people were getting very upset about it. And, um, I don't think we've seen the end of that. So, um, I'm not sure that we can rely on a robust population increase in Oconee County. If you're planning on basing, you know, future expenditures on that. Then I go on to my other issues. I just have, I just have two more. The second one is immigration. Since two thousand twenty-one, the border has been open. And there are various estimates of how many illegals, I will call them illegals because they are crossing the border illegally. Federal law still says, says they shouldn't. Uh, so there are, uh, estimates up to twenty million. Probably somewhere around eleven million is more realistic, but we have no way of knowing. And you've probably heard the, the statement that every state is a border state. That's because these people aren't walking over the border. They are flying. They are taking trains, they are taking buses. And they are being transported all over the country to every state, including the state of Georgia, as you now know from what happened in Athens not long ago. Athens, Clark County, Athens says it is not a sanctuary city, but for all intents and purposes it is. Uh, we now have legislation that Governor Kemp has signed, which hopefully will help to mitigate that. The illegal immigration is a stress on social services of all sorts, housing. And, you know, um, you know, public, public services that they give them, free food. And it, it is taking that money away from the citizens. I'm not sure we have a problem here, but we are only a very short distance from Athens. And I, I don't think, I don't think the issue is, is decreasing very soon. We also have crime, as you know. Uh, the crime has not really happened here, and most of the time we don't even know about it because it's not publicized. It's, and you have to look for it. It's, it's very frightening to a lot of us. You know, especially older individuals who are maybe benefiting from the, you know, the tax decreases. Uh, it won't make any difference if we are also subject to more crime. And it's impacting homelessness, you know, people who before had places to, uh, like the veterans, like the veterans and, and the usual homeless people who had places where they could stay now are being displaced by illegal immigrants. So it, it's a widespread, there's a widespread effect on a lot of, of services. But one of the things I want, and it's my third point and the last one. Early on in the administration, President Biden issued an President Biden issued an executive order which allowed voter registration through all sorts of social services agencies and also non-governmental agencies. So the people who are crossing the border are being either given voter registrations or told how they can register to vote. They are given access to social security cards and driver's licenses in many states. And once you get those cards in other states, I don't think that could happen in Georgia. But once you get those credentials in other states, you are pretty much able to go from state to state and maybe get reciprocal licenses. And our method of asking for proof of citizenship is not really good. It goes back to, I'm not sure if it's the Help America Vote Act or the National Voter Registration, the Motor Voter Act. But governments are not allowed, I guess, to ask for citizenship status. And certainly, I think there's a prohibition here in Georgia to ask for citizenship status. So more pressure is put on our election officials to do the extra work required to verify that a person who's registering to vote is or is not a U.S. citizen. So, you know, what can the commission do about any of this? Well, first of all, I would just want you to be aware of the issues that may be impacting our county soon. And also, make sure that the Elections Department has the funding that it needs to do the extra work to verify citizenship of voters before it's too late. We have until 2024 to secure, I mean, until November, to secure our elections for this year. And I don't think I'm being hyperbolic to say that this election will be very important to determine the future of our country. So I just wanted to let you know what keeps me up at night. Oh, and I also wanted to, just, because I just happened to have it with me, happened to have it, Chairman Daniel. I have the election summary reports from the last four. What do I have here? I have 2020, 2022, 2018, and 2016 May primaries. And it's about 30% voter turnout, even in Oconee County.
So you realize that every constitutional officer and every one of us sitting up here were voted in on those primaries.
I know. That's another mandate issue, isn't it? We ought to do more to get people to come out and vote in the primaries. We really, we really should. Right, thank you for talking.
Well, I would say this. There's a lot of signs going up.
Not many of mine.
Well, that's your choice. But there are other signs. I think, we try. I think, I mean, to say that we don't want people to come out to vote or insinuate.
No, 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 no.
That's, that's not the case.
I didn't say that.
Well, it's not the case. I mean, we try to get people to come out to vote.
Yeah.
But if they choose not to vote, or they want to only vote in the national election in November, that's their choice. But we didn't set up the rules. I mean, I will say this. I will go to the Democratic Party and ask them to cross over. There are Republicans who don't want that. There are a lot of Democrats that may sit home because they don't have a local race. But I will go ask them because we're the ones who deal with the quality of life issues here in Oconee County, not the Congress or not the president. We deal with stuff here. And it, you know, bad roads doesn't discriminate. Dogs barking at night, it doesn't discriminate. So I think we do go out. I have been on a ballot a lot of times over the years. But I will ask anybody to come and give me a shot. But, but I, we can't force somebody to go vote. There's just no way to do that. They probably do in Russia.
I would, I would actually love to see more people step up and run for office because there is a way that people can make a difference. They don't know how, so they won't do it. I made the decision to run on the last day of qualification because there wasn't anybody else. So, I mean, that's not the only reason. But if nothing else, you know, I'm not going to say that we will cause the voting rate to go up for this May primary. It'll probably be those amendments. That'll probably get, because the population here is also aging. It is aging. The average is getting higher. So, yeah, if that gets people out to vote, that'd be wonderful, just to see it happen. Or if just the thrill of the game gets people out. All right, and I hope you all understand that. All right.
Good evening. Harold Thompson. Live off Chief of Daniel Road in Oconee County. Just a thought about encouraging more people to vote or getting more people to vote. I know it's not your department. Make it easier for people to vote. I don't know if you filled out a, you know, a mail-in ballot recently, but it's complicated. And I've met several people who just choose not to. So I think mail-in voting, make it easier to, you know, put drop boxes back in. You know, make it easier for people to submit a ballot. I think that'll get more people to vote. Thanks.
Mail-in ballot. I know of a person who asked for their mail-in ballot a couple of weeks before the election, more than enough time, really, to get it in our county. And the ballot never came. I think it might have taken a month. Or maybe it never came. I forgot to follow up. But I also know that I lost my prescription drug coverage because a letter that I sent, which should have gotten there in three days because their letters were getting to me within three days, took about three weeks. And they finally got it. And it said I wanted to cancel my plan, even though I'd already called and said I didn't. So what's happening? The post office is extremely unreliable. If anybody thinks that they can rely on the post office to mail them, to get their ballot to them on time, and then to mail it back on time, is sorely mistaken. Because I don't know if you're aware, they, within the last year,